Ask Ms. Cotter to call the roll, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Lynch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mark?
Here.
Councilmember Kim Netzer?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Wilkinson? Absent.
All right, thank you. Third agenda item is public comment on the closed session agenda items. Numbers 5A and 5B. I see no one here in chambers with a comment. Is there anyone, Ms. Cotter, online with their hand raised?
I see no attendees.
All right, thank you. We'll close the public comment on the closed session agenda items, and we'll adjourn to closed session, Agenda Item 4, and return. Thank you.
We're resuming the regularly scheduled meeting of the Belvedere City Council. We've returned from closed session with respect to closed session item 5A. Advice was given and there's nothing further to report. And with respect to closed session, item 5B, there is nothing further to report. So we will continue with the agenda items. And that brings us to agenda items seven, reports and presentations. And seven A is city council reports. Are there any reports from my fellow council members? Thank you, Councilmember Cooper.
Okay, I am sit on the library or I'm the representative to the library Tiburon Belvedere Library Board. And I've been asked to announce that on April 23rd through 29th is National Library Week. And they they're planning to celebrate with virtual reality armchair travel, a magic show, workshops for teens and much more. Libraries are welcoming spaces that bring communities together for entertainment, education and connection through book clubs, storytimes, crafting classes and lectures. So visit the bell tiblibrary.org website to find out about everything happening anytime, but also specifically April 23rd to 29th. And I did want to give a quick update from the coyote task force group made up of our city manager, Robert Zadnik, our police chief Wu, Peter Mark and me. The city did the Belvedere contracted with Rebecca Dimitriak of Humane Wildlife Control. Rebecca arrived last Sunday and spent four days here in Belvedere. She walked almost all the streets primarily on the island. She was there by 5:30 every morning. She met with or spoke with at least six different residents and specifically about coyotes, but spoke with many, many residents while she was walking around town. And she reviewed all reported sighting and encounters information to date that Chief Wu had collected or also Marin Humane had collected. So Rebecca has now writing a report which will include her investigation up here, her findings and her recommendations. We're also at the same time created a special reporting form and looking forward to getting a hotline going because it's really important that our citizens continue to give us information about where they are seeing coyotes, but especially any encounters with the coyotes. And as we develop additional information for the community, we'll be placing it on a special coyote designated website area, area on the website. I think that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper. Are there any questions? Thank you. Are there any other reports, city council members?
I did want to just report that Peter Mark and I met to discuss the revocable license issue. We're working on it and we'll be, I believe we have sent recommendations to staff and that matter will be coming before us shortly.
Thank you. Any other reports from council members, questions? All right, we'll close that and take public comment on this agenda item. Anyone here wishing to address this agenda item? I'm not seeing any raised hands here in chambers. Ms. Carter, is there anyone online with a raised hand?
I see no hands raised.
All right, we'll close public comment on that agenda item and turn to the next, to the city manager report, Mr. Zadnik.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lynch. I'll start off my report by highlighting that despite a few rain days and delays, the 2023 road maintenance project is underway. Michael Paul Company has started construction on Golden Gate Avenue. Their initial focus is on grinding out repaving asphalt at locations where heavy trucks have caused stress on the roadways. If left untreated, the stress can cause problems, potholes, namely an even more serious structural roadway damage. The digout work will be followed by sealing of the roadway to prolong the lifespan. You may have heard that water is the enemy of roadways. Separations or cracks in asphalt do lead to premature failure of the road surface. This is why many potholes tend to show up during or just after heavy storms. So to address this, crews will be sealing these cracks and overlaying the select roads with the slurry seal material. The slurry seal has a lifespan of about 10 to 15 years and depending on traffic volume. The project is anticipated to conclude around the middle of May. And I did want to mention that's that time of year again when our attention turns to storm, from storm response to vegetation management and maintenance around the city. This year, we will be hosting another round of the curbside vegetation pickup program. This is a free service to the community where residents or their gardener can neatly stack brush and other cuttings at the road edge for pickup. Crews will come weekly to pick up the vegetation and ship it at the city's corporation yard. This will be the city's fourth year in offering this program. Residents always have great things to say about it. And it's an effective way to lessen the fire fuel load on the island while helping to get the community's thoughts towards fire prevention. The event will run from the middle of May through June and soon mailers will be sent to residents with more information. I am also happy to announce that the preliminary budget for this upcoming fiscal year will be reviewed by the finance committee on April 24th. Like most agencies dealing with the aftermath of COVID-19, this year's budget is constrained by inflation and trailing property tax revenue. Still, I believe it's that staff's preliminary budget planning work has struck a good balance in funding capital projects while controlling pension costs and ensuring that Belvedere remains an attractive place for employees. Once the budget is approved by the finance committee this April, it will then go to city council in May for consideration. And then finally, with regard to personnel, the city has been working with a placement agency, regional government services and recruiting a full-time director of planning and building. We've had several candidates apply for the job and ended up reviewing a good mix of local and regional applicants. There are certainly some shiners, shining stars within the mix. So we're planning to act quickly and bring someone on board in the next four to six weeks. While around the subject of staffing, I will give a shout out to Helga for being available for clerking this meeting. So thank you. As you know, we're currently in between city clerks. Beth Hayner, our former city clerk, has agreed to re- Beth Hayner, our former city clerk, has agreed to return on an interim basis and step in with some of the day to day as we work to fill this position again. So that's all I have in terms of updates. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take those.
And you do have any questions for Robert at this time? Thank you, Robert, appreciate that. We'll open the this agenda item for public comment. Is there anyone here in chambers who would wish to discuss this agenda item? Seeing none, Ms. Carter, is there anyone online with a hand raised?
I see no hands raised.
Thank you, we'll close a public comment on this agenda item and turn to agenda item seven C, which is a presentation and request for funding from Concerts in the Park Committee.
Good evening, Mayor Lynch and council members. My name is Adam Gavster, this is Peyton Stein. We are co-chairs of the Belvedere Concerts in the Park Committee, a volunteer committee. And we are very excited to announce we have booked all four bands for our concerts this summer. We have some great, a great lineup. I believe you have the list of bands in front of you and we will be publicizing it to our community shortly. And we are here to ask for the continued support from the city council, from the city. And we're here to answer any questions should you have them.
Thank you very much, Adam and PD. Appreciate the presentation and the diligence in getting all our bands lined up and all the work that you do for Concerts in the Park. Do we have any questions regarding this presentation?
Just want to thank you for your hard work on behalf of Belvedere. Concerts in the Park is one of the things that brings our community together and we all look forward to it very much. Doesn't just happen and we're very grateful for the large group of volunteers who put it together.
Well, it's a small group of volunteers putting it together. We share a very small committee.
It's a small group.
Shout out to them that we just seem to be getting to be a well-oiled machine and we really got some great groups this year and we're going to have some very fun openers. We always have a little opener for the concert and we're getting more and more creative on that. So the only thing I would request is if any of you have a good voice or interested, we are looking for people to sing the Star Spangled Banner to open the concert. Let me know. Don't look at me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. In my understanding is the request this year is for $5,000, is that right? Which is an increase from from last year or traditionally been about four, is that right? Very well. Thank you. Is this an action item that we need to address? Right, okay. Thank you very much and thank you for everything you do. We'll open public comment on this agenda item. Is there anyone here wishes to address this agenda item? Not seeing any, Ms. Carter, is there anyone online with their hand raised?
I see no hands raised.
All right, thank you, we'll close public comment and move to agenda item seven D, the quarterly police department presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Lynch and council members. Tonight, I am pleased to present the police department's first quarter report for 2023. I always like to start off by stating that the hallmark of the police department is our unparalleled personalized service that allows our residents to enjoy a very unique quality of life. I'd start off with our quarterly RIPA data. For this quarter, fourteen individuals were stopped based on nine officer-initiated actions and five separate calls for services. Seven individuals were stopped for traffic violations and seven were for reasonable suspicion. In all, eight warnings were given, three resulted in no actions being taken, one arrest made and two unfortunately fled from the police. The perceived racial composition consisted of four Caucasians, two Asians, six Latinos and two blacks. During this quarter, the department handled 669 incidents, which included eleven part one offenses and four part two offenses. They're highlighted in bold there. The remaining 654 incidents were classified as all other incidents. Most incidents handled this quarter were related to calls for service from our residents. For the first quarter of 2023, the police department conducted seven traffic stops, made one arrest and referred five cases. I, there was a clerical error, I put two, but it was actually five cases were referred for prosecution. We also assisted Tiburon PD on two occasions. As part of our ongoing professional development, PD personnel attended online and in-person training that were either mandated or for knowledge and skill enhancements. We also updated ten lexical policies in accordance with amended laws and they are detailed in the staff report. Lastly, the PD continues to be active in community events, which we always take great pride and joy in being a part of. And this concludes my report and staffs available to answer the questions.
Thank you, Chief Wu. Do we have any questions for the chief at this time?
I have a few, chief, real quick. Could you describe what, how you define reasonable suspicion?
Reasonable suspicion is something that is between a probable cause and a consent. You don't have that quite probable cause, but the law allows someone to detain someone. For example, let's say there is a person that happens to match the description of a suspect. Now, you don't have probable cause to believe that person committed the act. However, there's reasonable suspicion that this may be the individual. So therefore, by law, you, the police have the right to temporarily detain and to ascertain whether this individual is responsible for the act or not.
Okay, thank you. And further, you, you, all other incidents, the six sixty-nine or so, further broken down, there was one eighty-five officer initiated.
Did I, I'm sorry, did I put down eighty-five, apologies?
No, one eighty-five for officer initiated.
Yes, yes.
And and I'm trying, again, but that's distinct from a stop or some sort. What would that be described as?
An officer-initiated action could be anything from a traffic stop or an officer took a, an action based on personal observations as opposed to responding to a call for service.
So the fourteen you you talk about as as earlier in the report, those were actual, I'm not seeing the distinction between those fourteen and the hundred and eighty-five officer initiated.
So for the purpose of RIPA, fourteen individuals were stopped based on nine officer-initiated actions. So for example, that could be a traffic stop that had multiple people and individuals and maybe perhaps a driver. And I'm just using as an example, for example, a driver was stopped for, for a minor traffic violation and upon observation, the passenger was not wearing a seatbelt. And so therefore, that would constitute as two contacts, even though it's only one traffic stop.
And the one eighty-five officer-initiated, didn't say anything other than officer-initiated, but that's a different category, those are different, different encounters.
No, well, for example, like, let's say if an office decides to do extra patrol and they will go on record, go on the computer and say, hold me in this location for extra patrol. That's an officer-initiated action, so that would be part of that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Wu? Yes, Councilmember Cooper.
I wondered, Chief Wu, if it's appropriate to begin to keep track of the coyote calls that you get. I don't know if it's appropriate or not, just because we're hoping that it will decrease. It would be nice to see the numbers go down, but I just thought I'd ask if that was appropriate. I don't know if it is.
Um, certainly, we can do that if you, council desires. I can include that in my, my, my quarterly report.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, just to follow up on that question. But the data that is being reported to the police department regarding coyote sightings is being reported on a quarterly basis, right, to California Fish and Wildlife?
Correct, and I'm in the process of gathering the data to forward to California Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Wildlife as well as Marin Humane.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Wu this time? Chief, I had a follow-up to Vice Mayor Mark's question about reasonable suspicion. And I'm wondering if you just give an example of what that would be, a non-traffic stop detention based on reasonable suspicion, one of these seven events in the quarter?
Sure, I don't have the specific example, but I can give an example. For example, in the middle of the night, an officer hears a glass break and see a person, happens to be the only person in the area. And that would give grounds for an officer to detain this individual based on reasonable suspicion.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Seeing no other questions from my fellow council members, we'll close this item and open it for public comment. Is there anyone here wish to address this agenda item? Not seeing any, Ms. Carter, is there anyone online with their hand raised?
I see no hands raised.
All right, thank you, we'll close public comment. And thank you, Chief Wu, and we will move to the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of items that the city council considers to be routine or the council has discussed previously and do not require further discussion. Any, unless any item is specifically removed by any member of the city council, the consent council, the consent calendar will be adopted by one motion. And we will take public comment, so let's do that first. Is there any public comment here in chambers on the consent calendar? Not seeing any, Ms. Carter, is there anyone online with their hand raised?
I see no hands raised.
All right, we'll close public comment with respect to the consent calendar. Let me ask if anyone on council would wish to remove any of the items on the calendar?
I had a question. I don't know if that means you remove it, eight C.
Let's, let's see if the question could be answered, I think ministerially.
Actually, it's, it's to Helga. And I just wondered, you wrote declaring that the cost to provide services will exceed the 450,000 and that's why it had to come in front of us. And I just wondered, is that a trend that you're seeing? That these costs for the fired fire contract continue to go up and and we're not covering them, is what, how I read this, is that correct?
It is correct that they continue to go up. It's based on what Tiburon Fire estimates the cost for next fiscal year.
So it's a trend that you're seeing?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
But, but the declaration is a provision of the tax, the fire, the fire tax that the city needs to make in excess of 450.
Exactly.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about the consent items or would anyone like to remove any of the items? Not seeing any requests, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar on tonight's agenda, section eight, A, eight, C, D, E, F and G.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second, I'm just, this only through F, there's no longer a G.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
Thank you for the correction.
Second.
Thank you. May we call a roll, please?
Mayor Lynch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mark?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nixon?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
All right, it passes unanimously, thank you. Let's move to agenda item nine, other scheduled items. Nine A is a review of the proposed draft construction time limit ordinance. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mayor Lynch. I'll go ahead and kick off this discussion by saying that last year, the Construction Impacts Committee, along with several other recommendations, requested that staff consider revising its ordinance concerning construction time limits for projects. The driving force for making this change was to motivate construction projects to complete their projects on schedule while minimizing disruption to the surrounding neighbors. Several CTO models were considered, but ultimately Tiburon's permit expiration model seemed to provide the benefits that met the committee's goals. Today, staff has provided a report and sample ordinance for consideration, which we're interested in your feedback on. And should you wish to adopt the model ordinance or a variation thereof, staff would need to schedule a public hearing for adoption. So with those opening remarks, I'll go ahead and kick it over to you, Brian.
Thank you, Robert. Robert pretty much covered it. But just to kind of tie it up, we currently feel that the existing model is not sufficient in incentivizing projects to be completed in a timely manner and minimize impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. And staff does feel that that this model will incentivize people to get the projects done in a timely manner. And just as kind of a cursory advantage, it does also bring the city of Belvedere more, it provides more consistency in Marin County for this type of code. One of the hardest things that I recall in being in the trades is keeping track of every jurisdictions, even within the same county. There are different ordinances, laws, codes, things like that. And this will bring everything kind of more consistent with with other county CTO codes. And again, staff is here more as a discussion item to feel out how council feels about this model. If there's any issues or questions, we'd be happy to answer those questions and revise the ordinance.
Thank you, Brian, for that report, thank you, Robert, and for the memo as well. Are there questions of staff at this time from council?
I think I'd just like to say that I'm so glad to see this because I, I actually was on that Construction Impact Committee last year and it's so great to see things coming forward that were discussed then and which I think the community is still really interested in having something done about this. And I, I see it as the discussion being impactful for the whole community this way. So thank you for bringing it, bringing it to us.
Thank you.
I have one question of staff and I share that sentiment. Thank you very much for bringing this. We have had a, we see these on the, when they are appealed. So sometimes we see where the miscommunications or the glitches arise. That's kind of from the back end, but one of the problems we have seen arise or the issues is with regard to the landscaping. And as I was reading section two, C two, under the time limit guidelines, time limit for landscaping, it says that the applicant may have an additional ninety days. And to receive the additional ninety days, which by the way, I think is a good idea, to receive the additional ninety days, the applicant must file a request. And my question is, when does that request have to be made? Can it be made before the completion of the underlying project? And when does the ninety days start? One of the reasons for my question is because a penalty attaches to the violation of this ninety days. I think it's really important that, that, that the definition of the time be really clear for the applicant so that we don't get these on appeal later.
Totally understood, completely understood, excuse me. This is kind of a holdover from our current code. Currently, applicants are allowed a ninety-day landscape. The landscape consists solely of the placement of ground cover, topsoil, plants and drip irrigation. That is the only type of work that is covered under that ninety-day extension. Any type of flat work, painting of retaining walls or a type of veneer or finished material on retaining walls is not counted as part of that ninety-day landscape. Normally, we see the landscape application come in towards the end of the project. That does not mean that there is no time limit per se, per code on that, that application submittal. If we would like to put a cap on it, it would be best to put the cap of prior to the CTO expiration date. But in the new model, it would, the ninety days would start either at the submittal of the application fee, the deposit, the one percent. Or we, the staff would need to go out and verify with, working in conjunction with the property owner or the contractor to verify it, which point the landscaping and the very finite scope of landscaping began, which is something we currently do.
So, thank you, that some language that effect might make it a little bit more clear for applicants, but also, and this is just an ignorance on my part, in that kind, in the kind of landscaping you just described. In that kind, in the kind of landscaping you just described, would, would that possibly trigger additional requirements from SAN five? And I'm asking the question because we, that's where the SAN five requirement and the time involved in complying with SAN five has sometimes caused applicants to exceed their C T L. So are we fixing that problem with this new ordinance?
So SAN five does not govern the landscape. That would be M M W D, Marin Municipal Water District. The issue with SAN five, a lot of times, is not the lack of knowledge at the time of permit issuance or at the commencement of the permit, but it's following up on that knowledge and doing it in a timely manner. So I don't think the seat, an amendment to the C T L code will fix that problem. I believe it's better communication with the applicant, property owner, contractor, and the building department that'll better fix that problem.
Okay, thank you very much. That's great information.
Are there any other questions of staff at this time? All right, we'll open this item for public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to address this agenda item? Not seeing anyone, Ms. Carter, is there anyone online with their hand raised?
I see no hands raised.
All right, thank you. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. And ultimately to address the whether to direct staff to schedule a public hearing on this item. Councilmember Kinnison.
Yes, I think it's ripe for for scheduling a public hearing. And I look forward to hearing from the public on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper.
I agree. I'm great. I'm grateful that this is here. And I also agree with Councilmember Kim Nitzer that maybe the use of the word may be looked at carefully as in council may impose fees up to five times rather than, again, that leaves us with, do we, don't we, could we, shouldn't we? And I'd love it if that were more definitive instead of.
We can turn that into a shell.
Yeah, shell. I like that. So yes, I'd really be glad to see it come back.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mark?
Thank you. I've spent a lot of time with this over the past, and I worked with Brian and Robert quite a bit on this. And this weekend, I sort of tried to pull back and look at it anew. And Brian, I have a couple of thoughts that I wanted to both ask and also suggest. I do think that we should look at while, while we never looked at this from a financial perspective, you know, equating this to the current system, it's not a revenue decision. It's, it's really an intent to try and get a better structure, more timely, more applicable costs and charges associated with the extending of a project beyond the C T L or the permit in this case. But I do think we should look at some side by side apples to apple situations. What a, what a six month extension would look like under the old system versus the new system? So we can try to, if not equate, I'm not suggesting we equate, but make sure that the financial motivation is there. Doing my own math, I think it might be light, but I'll defer that to your analysis. That's one point. The second point is, I think there's a, I think in conjunction with this, we may need to look at the provisions of temporary C of O issuances because there might be a gap in this when a temporary C of O is issued. And there are provisions of the designer view approval that haven't been met. But the project is complete. So the applicant doesn't need or want to apply for an extension. The city has no more leverage to require that those designers, whether it's a window movement or a mis-sized eve or whatever the case may be, that is a that our planning department might look at. So final C of O provisions might need to be tweaked a little bit to require planning sign up first, which it may already, but I'm saying that's because I can see that being a gap in there somewhat. I also think that the, the landscape, although you, Brian, you mentioned it being a holdover from the current C T L, the 90 day extension, that I think is valuable still because the write up is really a courtesy and a provision for a terminating C T L or in this case, a ending permit in good standing. If someone's going to extend their, their, their C T L with an extension as is prescribed here, they wouldn't need or want to ask for the 90 days right then because the project's continuing. The intention is to have the permit end. And they're not in violation of their permit length or the C T L in the previous model. And the city gives them a 90 day extension for landscaping to complete the work, not the site work, not the, not the retaining walls, not the hardscape, but the planting and so forth. So it has its value, I think, and I think Councilmember Kinnison is, is correct in saying that the language may need to be tweaked a bit to define it as such. And just a further clarification on SAN five, their determination of improvements is completely dollar based at your original valuation. So based on the scope of the project, with or without landscaping extension, they determine whatever that number is, I won't quote it because I don't know it right now, whether improvements are required. And I, unless it's a landscaping only project that might trigger it, which it could potentially, the basic value of the home would be, of the project would be the consideration that they look at. But otherwise, thank you for this, and that one financial analysis, I think, would be valuable. We can look at it offline and then present it certainly as it goes back to public meeting. Thank you.
I also want to thank staff and Brian for all the work that's gone into this. Thank you, Vice Mayor Mark, for all the work that I know you've done on this and to our Construction Impact Committee, which did study this and proposed that we get us to this point, and I certainly support taking it further. I just want to echo a comment from Vice Mayor Mark that we need to, I think, make sure we go through the A P M and any other governing documents to make sure that we've got consistency throughout, beginning with the municipal code all the way through any other governing documents, particularly as it concerns the certificate, temporary certificate of occupancy and what, what it is that will terminate the permit and allow the permit to be signed off. And we want to make sure we have precision around what projects require a temporary certificate of occupancy. I think that's really demos. I think remodels retain their certificate of occupancy. And we, we need to make sure there's precision around that so that we know what events need to be completed to get the signatures to stop the C T L and make sure that's consistent throughout all the governing documents. So as part of this process.
Understood, and we do have a couple of policies that do address those questions. And of course, they would be amended to fit the current code. We wouldn't want a policy conflicting with, with the municipal code. So in amending the C T L code, we would then amend all associated and appropriate policies in the A P M.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, I think we're in agreement to recommend to staff to bring this item on the agenda for a public hearing at a, at a future council meeting. So with that, I think we can conclude that item. Thank you. And let's turn to agenda item nine B, which is to receive a report from staff regarding pedestrian vehicle traffic improvements at two sites. And can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. We have two traffic safety improvement projects the staff have been working on that we would like to bring to you for discussion. There are design alternatives for both projects, and at this point in the project development process, we'd like to seek council approval of a design alternative for each project, along with any comment or direction council would like to give. Staff would then move forward in the design and engineering work and return to council at a future date for final project approval before going out to bid. These two projects were identified by the Traffic Safety Committee, and the design alternatives were presented at their last meeting in January of 2021. At both locations, the aim is to improve general traffic safety, but the primary focus is pedestrian safety. So the desired outcome of the projects is to improve and enhance pedestrian safety at both locations. First location is the intersection in front of City Hall. That is San Rafael Avenue, where it intersects with Laurel and Acacia. And the second is on Lagoon Road at the bend on Lagoon Road, close to San Rafael Avenue, where there's a pedestrian connector path to the old rail trail. We have three design alternatives, including a recommended alternative for each project. These were provided by our traffic engineering consultant, Parisi Transportation Consulting. And we will go through those now. So starting with the City Hall intersection. And I'm going to see if this pointer works. Apparently, it should work on the screen of council members as well. Doesn't look like it. It is working. I'll have to try and describe different elements that I'm, that I'm speaking to. So the existing, this is the existing layout of.
We can see the mouse cursor if you use that, if Robert tracks along or whoever's doing it.
Give that a shot. Oh, man, so close. Yeah, let's try, let's try one more thing.
Select that mouse pad. There you go.
There we go. Okay. All right. Hopefully, this will keep track. Okay, so this is the, the existing layout at the intersection in front of City Hall. You can see that we have three diagonal parking spaces, and one of them is demarcated for ADA parking. It's not compliant. And there's no compliant path of travel from that parking space to the entrance of City Hall. There are no crosswalks currently. And the two bus stops. Well, so there's one marked bus stop at the Stop Street on San Rafael heading east. The bus stops in the afternoons, school bus, just in the middle of the intersection, next to the parking spaces right now. There is a sidewalk on Laurel Avenue at number 12 Laurel Avenue, but it stops there. And the only other sidewalk is directly in front of the steps at City Hall, which also stops there and then heads east on San Rafael Avenue. So moving to the first, does design alternative provided by Parisi? We have a new paved area in front of City Hall, which extends the pedestrian access from San Rafael Avenue across the front of the City Hall patio to the steps on the west side of City Hall that lead down to the community center and community park and restrooms. The paving would also continue to a crosswalk. The first crosswalk that would cross San Rafael Avenue goes from the City Hall side to the bulb out. And then it, that would cross again, there'd be another crosswalk to the other side. That bulb out on the opposite side of Laurel Avenue would have paving for a sidewalk continued up Laurel Avenue to meet with number 12 for the sidewalk up there. The two parking spaces are now parallel parking spaces, not diagonal parking spaces. So there are two rather than three. And those the ADA ramp would be in between the two parking spaces. Moving on to the next alternative. So here we have bulb outs again. Bulb outs are the let's see if I can point to them with, with the cursor here. Okay, so we have a bulb out over here and a bulb out over here, as we had in the last design. One of the ideas of having bulb outs is that it's, it narrows the intersection. So traffic moving towards the intersection to the, to the stop bar would have to slow down to navigate the, around the bulb out. So in this design, we have a single crosswalk that crosses diagonally across the intersection to a pedestrian ramp at the City Hall side. There would still be two, two parallel parking spaces, and the paving along the front of City Hall would be similar to the previous alternative. For this alternative, the crosswalk that, that passes through the middle of the intersection is not ideal. Typically, a crosswalk right in front of a stop bar is the safest option. So the distance between where vehicles are stopping and where pedestrians are crossing is quite far and is not ideal in this design. Moving to the next alternative. So this is a very similar alternative to the previous one, except that this includes paving for the sidewalk to continue up Laurel Avenue. The, the stop streets are the same, and the crosswalk is the same to the curb ramp. So moving to the recommended alternative, which is the first alternative provided with a few modifications. Working with Parisi, staff requested that an additional stop bar be added on San Rafael Avenue. So it turns the intersection into a four way stop instead of having one lane without a stop. The other elements are almost all the same, except that we asked Parisi to reduce the amount of concrete paving at the southwest corner of the intersection. So where it says corners islands with ADA walkway. The amount of concrete that has been reduced from their original design. And I spoke to them again today, and they said that that can be reduced even further. It's, yeah, so that's again, that's, this is conceptual, and there is more detail to come. So to repeat, the paving in front of City Hall continues from the sidewalk on San Rafael Avenue and connects with the stairs going down to the community center and to the crosswalk. And that is ADA compliant, and the crosswalk would be ADA compliant, the bulb outs would be ADA compliant. And so there's a path of travel from City Hall across the crosswalks and up Laurel Avenue to an existing sidewalk. The two parking spaces would be parallel parking. This is an improvement on diagonal parking. Because when a car is pulling out of a, of a parallel parking space, they're pulling forward instead of backing up. So instead of backing up into traffic, cars would be pulling forward into traffic. In addition, there would be the stop sign. That stop sign would also be the location of the new bus stop. So it would be a formal place for the bus to stop. And the existing ramp over there that's shown next to that, that stop would not would be removed. The flagpole would be relocated. The existing lamppost would, would stay. But these are again conceptual designs, so there, there's probably would be some adjusting with, with surveys and so on that we need, would need to be done. Just a note, these property lines on here also are just a guideline. They're not so very accurate. And so that is an outline of, of the recommended alternative for City Hall intersection. I am, would Mayor, would you like to break it up and have questions? Mayor, would you like to break it up and have questions at the very end or for each project?
I'm thinking we should probably have questions for each project unless my fellow council members disagree. Let's let's do that. So is there anything further you want to present or should we take questions now?
Not on this, not for this project.
Thank you. Do you have questions for Tony about the proposal at Laurel and Acacia?
All right, Vice Mayor Mark.
Thank you very much for this. The you have a couple of different bulb out lengths on going up Laurel on the eastern side there. And you mentioned that's to connect with the sidewalk further up the street, correct?
Yes.
How far does that sidewalk continue up the street or does it end at some point?
That sidewalk continues up the street. And and it actually ends at the top of Laurel.
Okay. So so that that connects to that sidewalk, otherwise the the smaller bulb out on that eastern side, which would retain some parking and keeps the road wider. It it's so that you can connect further up. You wouldn't have to go from sidewalk to street to sidewalk.
Yes, exactly. So it would provide a path of travel, a safe path of travel up Laurel from City Hall and from the the sidewalk in front of City Hall. Yeah, exactly.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions about this project?
I apologize. I think you, this is very similar to the question that that Councilmember Mark has asked, but but I didn't quite understand the answer. Why is the why is the bulb out going up Laurel? The length that is, why does that not just connect to a sidewalk? I believe that the sidewalk on that side of the street ends one house up from the corner. And so I'm just trying to figure out what you're trying to achieve by by having such a long bulb out, which it takes out a parking space and I don't know that it would slow traffic anymore, but there must be some reason that I don't understand.
I believe off the bat, there are some utility boxes over sort of in the vegetation that you can see over there. So you can't see the boxes. By building the sidewalk outside of those boxes, there is no conflict with those utilities. So that would be less costly to the project. And part of the reason for that sort of extended bulb out over there is is the driveway. So the front part of that driveway would be sloped. But it would allow ADA and an ADA path of travel across the driveway. So the front section of that is actually not part of the bulb out. Yeah, but as far as, you know, extending the bulb out goes, that's a great question. I I believe that the main reason is for those utilities and avoiding interfering with those.
Okay, so it doesn't. So because of that driveway, it actually would not be extended out as far as it looks in this drawing?
Yes. So let me try with the cursor here.
I think I understand that if it's true, but so one of the reasons I had concerns about this is the whole purpose of this is to improve the safety. We don't have an elevation, but if you just look at the the stop sign on Laurel and the stop sign on Acacia, it's already pretty hard to see a car stopped at that Acacia stop sign. And I just, you know, this is looking at it from above, but it is really important to look at it in three dimensions. And so I don't know whether any sightlines have been done. I know the Traffic Safety Committee was concerned about the sightlines at that particular intersection. So we want to be careful that we're not increasing, we're not creating problems, additional problems.
Understood. Yeah, absolutely. And I believe PeriZi have, you know, they've they've done a site inspection. And for them to provide this this type of design, I would imagine that they would have ensured that sightlines are clear. The stop on Acacia is a good point. I don't think that is moved from where it currently is, and there may be some room for improvement there.
Okay, so the so this bulb out that narrows it and and might might be creating a sightline problem, we don't know. It is for the purpose of slowing the traffic further at the stop sign. Is that correct?
Yep, for narrowing narrowing the lane at the intersection. Yeah. As the as they approach the intersection. Traffic calming. Yep, as Robert has reminded me, that's kind of the typical
Right.
term.
Is there room under the state statute? Has to be 48 inches. Is it a sidewalk? I can't remember. I think it's 48 inches. Is is there room there for us? That's 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 the area where we need to create a new small section of sidewalk. And I'm just wondering whether whether the this bulb out that is new there is due to the fact that we need a particular width for the sidewalk.
It's possible.
Because technically you wouldn't need a you wouldn't need a traffic calming device at a stop sign. You're already stopped. But I'm just trying to figure out the reasoning for narrowing the street at that point. And there are some downsides to it.
Well, yes, there are some downsides to it. Absolutely. I I believe it's fairly standard practice at an intersection to narrow the lanes. The the sidewalk would have to be widened, would have to be 48 inches wide over there. And there's no existing sidewalk at all. So this 48 inches is coming out from back of curb. So yes, that's that is a possibility, but that's the reason that that's there. I believe that it's also for for traffic calming purposes. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cooper.
I I think Tony, I think the confusion in that corner could be if you look at alternative two, the bulb out is a lot smaller and yet it's still a traffic calming. But it doesn't continue as far up the street and therefore cutting into whatever parking is available because it is a it is a street that has a lot of people parking on it. And so I think there's a potential issue with taking. I would just caution that we make sure that parking remains and isn't removed if it if at all possible.
Yeah, and there's also, I'm aware that there's a parking space being removed from the front of City Hall. So yeah, definitely understood that parking is important there. And I think you're right. That the reason that it's in this design wider is because in the one you're referring to, there's no sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
That comes up Laurel.
Thanks.
And Tony, would it be possible to to take the recommended design here and make the the bulb out on the southeast corner of Laurel smaller in the in the way that Councilmember Cooper just asked?
I can certainly ask our consultants to to do that. Yeah. Or at least find out if it's possible if a sidewalk is desired over there to connect to see what alternatives there might be to making that. And so to be clear, the the purpose of this would be to keep that parking space in that spot. Is that?
I think keep the parking spot and also reduce the amount of road narrowing that is occasioned by the recommended design.
Got it right.
Let me ask another question. This is this is a dumb one for sure. But what it seems to me, the stop sign, the proposed new stop sign on San Rafael is necessary, the revisions to parking in front of City Hall are necessary, and the ADA access related to that is necessary. What what analysis, putting aside the work that the Traffic Safety Committee did, what analysis has PeriZi done around the imperative for having one or two crosswalks at this intersection?
Well, I can't really speak to the amount of analysis that they've done. Are you, do you? So I'm not sure.
I'm just wondering if having a stop sign on on San Rafael, a new stop sign on San Rafael would address most of our safety concerns, both vehicular and pedestrian.
Yep, Robert has a comment also.
Jim, I think it's a fair question. From my perspective, you know, generally for my time in public works, we like to create what's called complete streets, where we do have existing sidewalks that have interconnected paths to them. Meaning we don't have a section of sidewalk that is or isn't fully ADA compliant, that doesn't that leads nowhere essentially. We do have a lot of sidewalk on Laurel Avenue. We're trying to solve the issue of that. Again, that sidewalk being a sidewalk to nowhere.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff at this time?
Yeah, if you don't mind following up what Marilyn's just said. Is there a is there a broader sidewalk philosophy that's in place or in the back of your minds as you're as you're thinking about this? Because you know, yes, you can get out of a car, walk, you know, west in the plan, cross over San Rafael Avenue, cross again over Laurel and then walk up to top of Laurel, but then you're in the middle of the street there. You know, so it's it's and likewise, if you go down San Rafael Avenue, eventually you're going to be have to cross the street and get a sidewalk. And at some point, you're not going to be on a sidewalk there either. That may not be true or not, but is there a philosophy? Is it? Is it just at every opportunity you seek to? I'm not criticizing it, but at every opportunity you seek to develop ADA compliant sidewalks where you can, when you can. Is that the idea that eventually you'll start filling in the gaps?
Yeah, that's the understanding. And it's also part of the the cities, although we don't, we're not large enough jurisdiction to have a a mandated ADA transition plan. We do have a document in place and it does identify certain locations like this. It also identifies having, you know, the lack, I guess, of a of a connecting sidewalk from City Hall to you know, to Leeward and some of the other locations. So that for the ADA transition plan, that is one of the goals. If you have a sidewalk that's abandoned or or limited partial in one area, they're looking for ways to connect those together.
Any other questions for staff at this time? We'll open up this item for public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to address this item? Yes, please come forward and tell us your name and address and confine your remarks to three minutes, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patty Kudo.
I'm Matt Kudo. We live in a 133 year old house on the corner at one Laurel Avenue. We've lived there since 1985. We probably know this intersection better than anybody that's done any analysis. The stop sign at the in front of City Hall is, that's great. Because there's always, every time you hear a beep, it's because the people are going around the corner and these guys haven't stopped. But that's very good. We're concerned about the bump out. Obviously, that one Laurel on the corner there because we may lose our hedge. We don't know what those dimensions look like. So that that would pretty much destroy that corner for us. One comment on the other side of the street, that's two parking spots you're going to lose, not one. And you're right, everybody parks on Laurel. If you've got drawings, you're going to go to the city, you park in front of our house, in front of Matt and Laura's house. That's going to create an issue unless you can get contractors to go to the parking lot. That's that'll be an issue here. So what else you got?
Yeah, I think that the parking is definitely an issue. Is there any way that the bump out could stop at their driveway? And do we really need the sidewalk the rest of the way up? I mean, we've owned the house since 1940s, you know, we've lived here since 84. And we haven't had anybody, we've had bicycles twice hit intersection for not paying attention. But walkers, it's never been a problem. And Matt and Laura have stepping stones down their side there. So I'm I'm all for safety, but this hasn't really been a safety issue so far. I can see trying to make the corners. I know when you restructure, they need to be ADA compliant. So, you know, our goal is that they be as small as they can and not stick out. We were also concerned, I know this is a draft photo, but the property lines a few years back, there was a neighbor a few doors down that registered a survey of property lines that put our house a foot and a half into our neighbor's property. So we went out with a metal detector and found the real pinpoint and redid it because the road San Rafael changed at one point in time. And so we found the real point and got our house back in the right place. We're on our property again. So our concern is that when they go and they do this final map, they survey it from the right place.
And I can show them where the property is.
Yeah, so that
underground, so we won't see it.
Yes, we don't. We we're concerned that when the final map is drawn, that the survey is done correctly. Because the one I'm filed at the county right now is not the correct survey map. That neighbor says, so that's no longer a problem. So we are concerned about the size of bumps. I'm really concerned about the loss of parking. They don't have bridge down here anymore, but on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we just have no parking at all when they had the bridge downstairs. And it there is a lot of parking in our neighborhood. So those three parking lots, three parking spots is quite a bit. So if there's a way I to bring that bulb out at Matt and Laura's at 11 Acacia, just to their driveway and reconsider, do we really need a sidewalk at the street? And I think
Well, I have your attention. We live next to all those underground boxes that you see in those pictures. And they're held down with bolts and bolts come out and nobody goes back to tighten it down because
I think that's it. So the bulb out, parking, the survey, I think we're good. Will you keep informed all along the way, like all the processes and steps you guys take, seeing that we live right here on the corner, will we be informed all the way through the process?
That's important.
Thank you very much.
Matt and Laura did ask me to ask, those boxes aren't going anywhere, right? The utility boxes that are there are going to stay no matter what. They hate those.
Can we paint them?
Unfortunately, yes, they'll be staying where they are at this at this point. Yeah. Yeah, as far as as far as we know.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment from anyone here in chambers? Not seeing any. Ms. Cotters or anyone online? Their hand raised?
We do have one person, Deirdre McCrowan.
Very well. Let's connect her.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. This is Deirdre McCrowan and I am covering the meeting, but I have a question as someone who's become more disabled over the last few years. Is it possible for someone to use the cursor to make it clear about how those ADA spaces would be arranged? Are is is the ADA space I see two? In the final drawing, I see two parallel spaces. One of them looks like it has an ADA symbol in the middle. And it looks as if that would be a parallel space too. And that someone who's driving would have to get out into traffic. Am I looking at it the right way?
Yes, you are. And that's that's a great question. I have the same question for our traffic consultant. That is a compliant ADA parking space. They're not used very often. But our consultants assures us that it's that it is a compliant parking space.
Okay. It is a sore spot with me that sometimes it seems that I don't know who decides what ADA compliant is, but for instance, those yellow raised pads, and I have a feeling you've got a few of them over here. Those are actually the bane of people who use walkers and and wheelchairs, but I'm really, really concerned about putting, you know, putting the ADA spot out further into traffic and making it difficult for someone who is not able to get out of their car. out of their car and then over into a, a sort of a safe area. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online? Their hand raised?
There's no one else.
All right, thank you. So if it's brief, we'll allow you, yes, please come forward and speak to the microphone. So, thank you.
Sorry, on the bulb out at 1 Laurel Avenue, where the curb comes in and it's closed off, is there a way to make that open so if people want to continue up our side of the street? Or is the purpose that they want you to go across the street to sidewalk? Because a lot of people walk both sides of that street. So now with that bulb out, there's another curb for them to step down. But I have seen the bulb out that have ramps down each side. That's, that's all.
Thank you. We'll close public comment and bring it back for discussion among council, Councilmember Cooper.
This is going to throw a chink into everything. I was thinking a lot about all the ADA improvements we're trying to make, and do they really meet someone's need that isn't permanently disabled, but maybe is elderly or using a walker or has had an accident, is on crutches or whatever. So at some point in the future, we do have a big parking lot down below, but no way to get up all those stairs. So if, if there was an, one of the ADA little, almost like a elevator that went just alongside the building and could go right up straight, essentially just right to our plaza area. Anyway, like I said, that's just throwing something else out there. But other than that, I guess I'm fine with this. I, I would like to see that Laurel Road not lose, Laurel Ave not lose as too many parking spots. And I guess, like everyone's saying, the sidewalk goes nowhere. Well, even if you extend the sidewalk, it's still going to go nowhere. It just goes a few more feet to nowhere. So listening to the comments, I think maybe relooking at if putting a sidewalk there is, is a necessity. I don't think people, that hill is probably too difficult to manage if you needed a walker, wheelchair, or you're on crutches anyway. So I don't think the sidewalk would help that aspect of it. But anyway.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mark?
Thank you. I take Mayor Lynch's comment to heart in thinking about this, about certainly the, and quickly to Councilmember Cooper's perspective, I don't believe City Hall is ADA compliant, is accessible either. So, you know, you're going to, you're going to walk, you're going to go up that ramp and be faced with other obstacles as well. So let me just quick question, is that correct?
Yes, I think that is correct. Yeah, it's, I'm trying to remember how wide the doorway is, but.
But there are steps right there, you know, either, each of those steps, each of those pathways are steps. So it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, from our current ADA stall, there is a ramp. It's an asphalt ramp, and I know we mentioned early on that it wasn't ADA compliant. We, we do have a partially compliant.
Okay, okay.
Front entryway to, to City Hall, but this would be an improvement to that.
And when I mentioned Mayor Lynch, the, the stop sign in front of City Hall, I think is a necessary and very, very valuable part of this plan. I, I take Ms. McCrowan's comments about, you know, how accessible are those ADA spots? And if they could be pushed in a little further to get, to get a little, little more separation from the street, if that's at all possible, while still maintaining that ramp access would, would, would be a good, good improvement. I wonder if we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist in the crosswalks and the additional bump outs on Laurel and the other side of Santa Fel Avenue. I take the sightlines comment by Councilmember Kennison very seriously. This looks like that stop sign, stop point, is about eight to 10 feet further back up Laurel, which would radically, I, I believe, change that ability of that car stop there to look around the corner to Acacia to see if someone's coming out from that drive. So I know we're looking for, and I respect the, the approach to have a complete solution for the intersection. But I wonder if we're trying to solve something that doesn't need to be solved on, for, for the crosswalks. And I appreciate having ADA compliancy further walking up, but you are only going another 75 yards up the street before you're no longer in an ADA compliant sidewalk. So I'm wondering if the cost and expense and the impact on the houses on Laurel and lack of parking, it really gets us that much beyond the real benefit, which I think is the improved ADA parking and the stop sign on Santa Fel Avenue. I guess those would be my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennison?
Yes, I want to thank staff and, and the Parisi firm for, for really looking into this. We've wanted this for a long time, this meaning some, some solution here. I am surprised at these bulb bouts myself. It's kind of a surprise in terms of just trying to figure out how we would navigate this on a, on a daily basis. I think I had envisioned a simple sidewalk going up one side of Laurel, simply connecting to the existing sidewalk on the, it's that southwest side of the street. The reason we need some crosswalk across Santa Fel Avenue is that we have a very, very active bus stop. So I'm a grandmother. I pick up my own grandchildren there sometimes. You have kindergartners getting off a bus with no, with no crosswalk. And I think that the, the addition of the stop sign will certainly help things. But I don't think having that be the bus stop is going to help things. I think the bus stop has to be at the crosswalk. So under this scenario, would be, would, would the school bus be allowed to stop at that pedestrian crossing? Or do they, or do they have to stop behind? Do they have to let the children out at the bus stop? That would be my first question. My second question is that I think Ms. McCronan has raised a really good issue. In my mind, it's not enough to be statutorily compliant with ADA. We, we want a solution that's safe. Not sort of, does it, does it necessarily just check the right boxes? I think Vice Mayor Mark mentioned whether those parking spaces might just be set a little deeper, at least allowing someone to be able to open a door into traffic. Right now, it looks like someone who needs ADA compliant transportation solutions is opening a, a door right into traffic, which doesn't seem very safe to me. So I think that needs a little bit rethinking. And I, I don't really understand the bulb out on the eastern side. I just don't understand the, the reason for it. It's a very, very narrow street there at the base of Laurel, where Santa Fel comes in. And once again, we don't want to, and there's also frequently bicycles there, which may or may not stop at that stop sign. So again, I think it's important for us as council members and staff and our consultants to think, how is this space actually used? Not just what may look okay on paper. I guess that's partly our job here as council, because we actually use it. But anyway, I, I think that P2 is a huge step in the right direction. Some people will object to a stop sign, no doubt. But most people that live on the island and use that understand that that weird three-way stop is, is, is dangerous and has been for a long time. So I think we're close, but I think we agree that we should take a second look at why those sidewalks need to be widened at that point. If there's a reason for it, we don't understand, you can just explain it. But otherwise, it's a, definitely a step in the right direction. I would like the sightlines reviewed with vegetation and, and a report on that. But thank you for your hard work. I favor working with this, the P2 design. I don't know if we came to any consensus on that or not. And with some adjustments, I think that we can go forward in that direction.
Thank you. I too want to thank staff for all the work that's gone into this, beginning with the work by the Traffic Safety Committee. And I think this discussion tonight has been good, but I think what we're hearing is that there's a little bit more work and thinking perhaps some design work with Parisi to tweak this consistent with the comments that, that that we've heard tonight, including the excellent comments from, from the public on this issue. I, I, I do think adding a stop sign in front of City Hall is critical. I see, I thank Councilmember Kennison for the comment about the utility and necessity of a crosswalk across Santa Fel. I would look to connect that up on the Acacia side, or excuse me, on the Laurel side, with the least amount of concrete and bulb out as we could. I would consider whether there's a necessity for a crosswalk across Laurel, or whether we could solve the pedestrian concerns with one across Santa Fel. And I, I think the comment was very good about the utility, putting aside whether it's, you know, checks a box and the statutorily compliant to have parallel ADA parking that opens up into traffic. We really do need to think about how people are going to use these spots. And you imagine someone, you know, getting out, getting a walker out, getting a wheelchair out, getting into a wheelchair in the middle of this four-way intersection. And I wonder if Parisi can go back and, and look, I realize this is sacred ledge given where we are now, but to maintaining those slanted parking spots and putting in a ramp so that somebody could get out of their car, use a walker, use a wheelchair, without having to do that in traffic in the middle of an intersection. So those are, those are my comments. I think we're close. I think this is important work. I think this project needs to get done. But I'm wondering if we can do, go back to the drawing board a little bit and tweak the existing P2.
Thank you. Yep, I believe we, we definitely can. We can return when we've made some adjustments and modifications.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Tony. And so do you want to move on to the next project?
Yes. So the next slide will be Lagoon Road. So this is the existing layout at the location on Lagoon Road, the bend in Lagoon Road, close to Santa Fel Avenue. There is a pedestrian connector path that's well-used and connects the Old Rail Trail to Lagoon Road. Currently pedestrians come out of that and walk into the street. And there is somewhat of a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street. It has rock in it. So it's not a concrete sidewalk. And there, in speaking to one of the neighbors over here, and I don't know if this is something the Traffic Committee had wanted to address, but there is concern about the speed that people take that, that bend. And so the neighbor, when, when she pulls out of her driveway, is always concerned that somebody is coming fast around the corner. And so looking at the first design alternative to improve this area. So Parisi and this one have the minimum, sort of the minimum impact approach. The crosswalk is two painted white lines across the road and a pedestrian ramp on the other side of the road that bulbs out slightly. And, and that's about it. The next slide shows a 100% compliant ADA kind of dogleg pathway that, that comes from the Old Rail Trail down to a crosswalk in a different alignment, but with similar bulb outs for the ADA landing area, as they call it. And this is a raised, actually, this is a raised crosswalk. So this would be six inches high with, with a tapered paving on either side and which would act as a, as a slowing, traffic slowing mechanism. And moving on to the next slide. And in this slide, there's an improvement of the connector path to the Old Rail Trail to make it ADA compliant. The raised crosswalk is in, is in the, the first, is in the alignment of the first alternative, which actually also improves visibility of pedestrians as they're crossing that, that crosswalk and standing at the edge of it. This, this design has the, the sidewalk being improved on both sides of the crosswalk as far as the driveway on the east and it looks like about 20, 20 feet down towards the west. And the next slide will show the recommended alternative, which is that last design alternative with a few additional modifications. So this keeps the alignment of the, of the side of the crosswalk in the most visible location. The sidewalk on the southern side of Lagoon Road is paved, heading down towards Santa Fel Avenue, which is where there's a, a very well-used pedestrian pathway. There are center lines in the middle of the, of the crosswalk so that it's clear which side of the road is which when crossing over the, the speed hump. And the connector pathway to the Old Rail Trail is ADA compliant as a, as a ramp. To add to, to this, there is drainage work and flood mitigation design work that is happening concurrently and would be expected to, to be done at the same time as, as any of these improvements would be done. The signage on here is, is important. That 15 mile an hour with a, with a, the arrow over there is, is currently in place. So that would be just reinstalling it at a slightly different location. The sightlines of pedestrians on the crosswalk have been, so Parisi did a site analysis for this to ensure that those are, are safe. On a bend, it's, it's not, it's not certain that it's a good place for, for a crosswalk. But in their analysis, they, they found that the, the site distances were, they met the minimum requirements. I am, and yeah, there's, there are more details, but I can see if there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Cooper?
Oh, sure. I, I guess when I read this, it's, it said that we had allocated funds for flood mitigation. And I didn't see where, where funds are available for this entire sidewalk, crosswalk, signs, et cetera. And having all these plans. And having all these plans, I also wondered if there was a drainage plan, since that was the whole reason for doing all this and how, and if the drainage, where does it come in and how does that whole thing work? I wasn't quite, I didn't understand. I understand the drainage project. I don't, I didn't understand how these two intertwine unless it's just out of convenience that you're already doing drain. And so therefore this is an opportunity to do all this, but my, my initial reaction is that this is an awful lot to do at a curve and I think the appropriate place for a cross, crosswalk on Lagoon Road is down by the little dog park, Tom Price Park between the, where the tennis courts are also because there's two stop signs right there. There's a parking lot right there. It would be very easy access for parking on the street as well. And it's certainly much safer and connects in. I don't know if anyone considered, if this is such a huge project, did anyone consider just not having that path there and turning it all into dirt and plants and then you don't have to worry. I only see, it seems very dangerous to me to put a crosswalk right in the middle of the curve.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mark.
Thank you, Tony. I have a couple of quick questions. So follow up on, on what, uh, I thought that Cooper said, you, you write that the, sorry, I'll put my mic on. Uh, you write that the traffic and safety improvements at the site are integral to the flood mitigation design. Is it just the concurrent nature of the two that's efficient or is there some dependency requirement or some dependency?
There is, there's a little bit of dependency, but it's not, um, the crosswalk itself would not be connected to drainage improvements. No. Yeah. My understanding is that, um, so this, that the Traffic Safety Committee, in I guess twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty, uh, this was discussed as, as a sort of broadening of the scope of that flood mitigation project.
Okay. That's my second question. In a letter provided the council, uh, a member of the Traffic Safety Committee said that they did not recommend this site, but in fact, two other sites on Lagoon Road for a crosswalk. Is that true? Do you know that or?
I've, I've received two, uh, two public comments. I don't know if one of the people was a member of the Traffic Safety Committee.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking about Linda Bynne's note, and if, if I mischaracterize her as part of the committee or not, I apologize. She's stating that, she, she's stating that the Traffic Safety Committee recommended adding two crosswalks on Lagoon Road, on Lagoon Road, neither of which was this current proposal. So I'm just, is that?
Well, um, my understanding is that this has come through, come fire the Traffic Safety Committee. The report that I think, that, that I referred to has the general traffic safety committee report, and it also has attached the crosswalks and sidewalks report. In that, there is a mention of Lagoon Road and San Rafael Avenue crosswalk, which in my writing of the report is what I, I assumed this was.
Okay. I can't really tell from this, this drawing, but the sidewalk that goes on that southeast part of Lagoon down towards Santa Phil Avenue, does it go all the way to Santa Phil Avenue? I believe the last house is quite developed in that, in that area. So does it bulb out or does it stop and not continue all the way?
At this point, it stops. And that's something that I think would be ideal, would be to connect it all the way to Santa Phil Avenue.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff at this time?
Yes, I have a couple also. I had the same concern about the integrating of this design with the flood control project. And I was concerned, uh, interested about the timing of that concurrent project. It does make, I think there is some connection between the two, particularly in terms of the configuration of this. What, what did you refer to? I call it a tagline, but they pass through the little path.
Oh, the connector path?
The connector path, sorry. So, um, so I understood that the Traffic Safety Committee had considered whether or not just to block it off. It is dangerous, but that's one alternative. And I think if you're considering widening it and making it something other than dirt, so widening it and putting concrete, you may be creating a spillway and there may be more need to come, to connect the two projects rather than to do one and then find out that it's caused a problem later. So I was very concerned about what the timing of the two projects we're talking about. Then I had a question. One category of users of that path are kids on bicycles coming home from school and coming from the bike path. Usually often quickly. And is a raised landing pad safe for that kind of activity? I don't have any idea of how high it is. It's a, it's intended to be a, a traffic calming device for the cars on the road. But has Parisi considered the actual use of that? That pathway for, for cyclists, particularly kids on bikes?
Yes, I believe he has. And that was, so one of the design alternatives had the dogleg design. And I believe the idea with that was not only for improved ADA compliance. This is eight percent, which is max, maximum grade that you can have for a ramp. The alternative, the, the other alternative he had proposed had it at less than five percent. So it would be a pathway. But what that would also do would be to redirect people like cyclists in a, in a loop before they get to the crosswalk. So they wouldn't go directly down onto the crosswalk from the, from the old rail trail. So this is an improvement of what's there. There isn't, there, it is a paved path that's there right now. The, the way Parisi have portrayed it is as an eight-foot wide path. I don't think that's necessary. Right now, the old rail trail is an eight-foot wide path because it needs to have traffic going in two directions. Parisi have assumed that that would be, okay, this would be a continuation of that. It doesn't, it wouldn't have to be that wide. So there would be a narrowing effect over there. There are also other slowing measures that could be put in place, like there, there are devices called chicanes that you can use, which are sort of two, two fence ends, which forces somebody to go in a, in a kind of an S through the, through the structures on a path. So that has been discussed as a method of slowing bicycles down as they approach the, the crosswalk. The height of the crosswalk is six inches. That's the, uh, the raised height that they, that they talk about. I think that, that wouldn't make, I, I think the safety of, of cyclists would be the same whether it was six inches or, or, or not. I think the, crossing the crosswalk would still be, you know, relatively flat. It, it, it would, that, it would still slow cars down though. So that would be the, the kind of the safety measure of having a six-inch high crosswalk.
My recollection, so this project doesn't really go to San Rafael Avenue. And my recollection of the committee's concerns was that this was a sidewalk to nowhere. And I know age-friendly Belvedere also is very concerned about having a walkable city on the flat part of Belvedere as opposed to the island, certainly. And, and partial sidewalks can, are something that I think as a city policy we'd like to avoid. So I think it was Councilmember Mark who, who mentioned the property at the corner of Lagoon Road and San Rafael Avenue. Is there any reason why this sidewalk would just end? And, and when you think of how these things are used, the danger would be that if someone who needs a sidewalk for mobility issues encounters the end of a sidewalk, you have someone who may be infirmed all of a sudden in the middle of the street trying to find that where the sidewalk starts again. So is there any reason why this design does, just ends, does not go to San Rafael Avenue where the sidewalk does recommence?
No reason that I'm aware of, apart from that, it wasn't included in the scope for Parisi to, to design for.
Okay. Thank you very much. My main concern really is, and I certainly want to hear from any members of the public who may be here, but who, who may, and, and certainly the people who've written, but my main concern is that it seems like the two projects should be done at the same time, both for financial reasons and, and logic.
Yes, agreed.
Thank you. Let's open this up for public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to address this agenda item?
Hi, my name is Pat Carepiot and I live at Four Lagoon Road. That's actually my home that we're talking about across from there. I've lived in my house for coming on twenty-seven years in June and that corner has always been a very tough corner or curve to go around. We're very used to it at our house. You know, when we pull out, we're very cautious, looking both ways. My concern about, and I appreciate the Traffic Committee being concerned about safety and this city addressing these issues. But my concern about this is, is that the widening of the walkway pass-through, whatever we're going to call it, from the bike path to eight feet is seems excessive for what it's being used for. And I think that after living there for so many years, that putting a crosswalk there, encouraging people to use that pass-through any more than what they do now, it's kind of local people that use it. Except when Tiburon is doing projects on bike down and they do a due tour down Lagoon Road. I think that it, in, I have gone through probably about four or five DPW guys with the city. And I can say that I've talked to each one of them over the years regarding that walk-through and the plot of land across from there and improvements on it. And I've been told by many of those DPW people that they don't want to touch that pass-through because if they do, then they assume all the liability. And then I've been told by the probably three DPW guys from Tiburon that they also don't want to touch that walk-through because then they would have to assume the liability for it. So I, I just think that Councilmember Chemist Sir's suggestion of just blocking that off is a pretty wise idea. It gets rid of the possibility of a potential accident at a very treacherous curve in Belvedere. But I leave it up to the city council to make the right decision on, on that. And so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Any other public comment from anyone here? Not seeing any, Ms. Carter, anyone online?
I do have one hand raised, Linda Bynne.
Thank you. Go ahead, Linda.
Hi, thank you. Um, first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Mark for reading my letter. I was not on the Traffic Safety Committee, but my husband, Harry Summerfield, was. And I just verified with him that they did not discuss this location. They might have discussed San Rafael and Lagoon Road where there is a, a, a crosswalk, but not a stop. But they mentioned, as Commissioner Cooper brought up, the location at May Bridge where there are stop signs, but not a crosswalk. So, and I agree, I mean, I walk there a lot. And as a walker, I'm walking on, in the street on the, coming from Santa Phil Avenue on the left-hand side. And then you would have to cross this six-inch raised, I, I've seen people tripping. They would be tripping on it as walkers because you're walking in the street. So I, I think a raised crosswalk is crazy. I think having a crosswalk there is crazy. Local people use that path. We know to be aware of what's going on and to institutionalize it as a, a place to go is just really asking for trouble as, as Pat Carapet mentioned. So I, I think that time and energy would be much better spent putting crosswalks in other places in the city rather than here.
Thank you, Linda. Ms. Cutter, anybody else online?
I see no other hands raised.
Thank you. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Chemist Sir.
I would like to defer the decision on this until it is incorporated into the flood design. Hopefully that's sooner rather than later. Still didn't, I'm still not quite clear about the timing of that, but I would, I, I would really favor, as Ms. Carapiett mentioned, I would really favor just closing it off. And there are other ways to enter Lagoon Road. And, but I definitely would like to see that sidewalk continued around to San Rafael Avenue. That was as, as Lee Linne Bynne or Harry Centerfield just mentioned, continuing that, cleaning up and finishing that sidewalk is something that has been considered for a long time. And once again, there is a, a bus stop letting little children out on the corner of Lagoon Road and San Rafael Avenue, and it's a blind corner. So I would really like to see that sidewalk continued for the safety of our children. But as for the crosswalk here, I think the problem's better solved by, by just getting rid of the, the pass-through. Center, uh, Lagoon Road is easily accessed from Santa Phil Avenue and elsewhere along the, the bike path. Certainly further down along Lagoon Road. So the big problem there, I think, is a flood issue. And whether it can be blocked off and prevent flooding is, is something that needs to be considered anyway. Certainly the Carapietts who live right across the street there have suffered floods in the past and look forward to that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mark.
Thank you. Uh, I've got a lot of concerns about this, but before I get to those, if I get to those, I, I sort of see it sort of a, a bigger picture. Sort of a bigger picture, it looks like this is a. Like we're trying to improve this 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 site because it does exist, not because it's the best spot to cross over to the path. I certainly do feel we need a crossover to the path. But I think we're trying to make this existing site as flawed as it may be, as safe as possible, and I'd rather. Maybe reconsider it and say, is there a better spot to cross over to the path, either leave it in the condition that it is or eliminate it altogether. There does seem to be better better locations for a crossover. I think negatives are, I I think narrowing the road is not a good idea, I think the the raised elevation, I don't think is a great idea, I think. Council Kimmitzer's comment about the bikers coming down on the six inch. The six inch raise isn't so much that they're crossing the path, they're coming on the path and then going down onto the road. And that's a, I don't know that would be a safer condition for a bicyclist in that in that consideration. So I I would. Question this, I would wonder if we're trying to achieve a safe and access, a safe accessible way to get to the Tiburon bike path, whether this is the best location. Or are we just trying to, as Mrs. Vine said, institutionalize something that's existed? When I'm not sure that's that's the wisest thing for us to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
I don't really have anything more to add, I agree with what's been said before.
Thank you, and I can make my comments brief as well. There's, 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 you know, we're hearing, this has been a really helpful discussion, I particularly want to thank. Ms. Kerapiat and other members of the public who wrote in. There is pretty uniform hesitation about this project from members of the public and I I tend to agree that. While this passageway could be made safer. We, it it this design also could could have unintended consequences of making it potentially more dangerous. And it may be that the the way to invest in safety would be to. Do nothing there and invest in a crosswalk further down closer to the tennis courts and the dog park. Or maybe planting shrubs there and and closing it off as has been suggested. And of course, there would be some coordination, I think, required with Tiburon, whatever was going to be done there, I think part of that path is probably in 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 town of Tiburon limits. But my sense is that we probably need to to shelve this proposal and and try to maybe find a different place to invest some safety dollars. I don't want to, I don't want to speak for my fellow council members, but is that is that the sense?
That's definitely. My sense of it, but I would. Like to see if perhaps we from a say, we could sever off the the simple sidewalk issue. It's a real safety issue for the children and doesn't necessarily have to be part of this bigger project. And. Could be funded separately and could be accomplished very, very easily. And and solve that safety problem.
So I don't think we necessarily need to vote on this, it's. I think we can just defer it. For reconsiderations later time.
Thank you, Maryland Council members, I think you've heard a lot of great feedback, certainly a lot of wise counsel too, just regarding how traffic is used in those areas, so. We'll take your feedback, we'll in some ways get back to the drawing boards and in other ways, you know, maybe consider other projects, so we'll work on that, thank you.
Terrific, and thank you for all your hard work on this, we know it's not always, not always easy to reach consensus, so we really appreciate the effort. That will close that agenda item, it brings us to agenda item ten, the open forum. Is there anyone here who wants to address anything that's not on tonight's agenda? I don't see any hands up here, Ms. Carter, is there anyone online?
I see no hands raised.
That's my writing, we will close the open forum and we will adjourn. Thank you, everyone.